Following the legal advice of our council. I mean, they could decide to defend us, or there could be some consequences there too. So, we definitely want to make sure that we are following in those circumstances, the guidance of our council.
Any other questions during further discussion? Alright, so next on our agenda is our finance department update. Time manager.
So, recently, the town has been using the CPA firm of Wigglesworth, Layton and Moore from Sands. We've been using them since 2020, since the embezzlement occurred. And we've been using them to make sure that our books were written and filed. Now, we're using them basically monthly to write and file our books as well, when we're permanent. What led to that was, I had a conversation with our auditor, this PKS, and I was trying to determine why the audit, that look up to take down. Why the audit had taken so long, is taken. And it was brought to my attention at the time that there were certain deficiencies in the finance department that they had asked to be corrected over the course of a year and hadn't done it correctly, which made it really difficult for PKS and the auditor to do the audit. Also, it had come to my attention that we were close to losing several significant grants, law enforcement, because our paperwork and our record was substandard, I mean, really substandard. So, as I started to look at the finance department and the operations of the finance department, we were really deficient in several areas. Accounts receivable and accounts payable, which is basically your bread and butter for finance. So, it was found that we were not accurately depositing or recording money that we were receiving. So, we were receiving funds for certain things that we were recording in different letters. So, and that was a pretty consistent practice of PKS that got to our attention. We were not paying bills as we should, even though the money was there. There were bills over sixty to ninety days over due. We were accruing late fees across the board from multiple accounts, from credit card accounts to our, to our big payment ticket items, such as, I'll give you an example. We got a twenty, two thousand fifty thou, a twenty-five thousand dollar annual payment for our trash truck, so you can just imagine what the late fee on that is. So, I had to go back and renegotiate with them, let that, you know, so that they would credit that back. So, we were having those problems consistently. I had requested certain policies and procedures put, put in place to prevent that from happening and that hadn't occurred. Records management, records maintenance was a very big, big issue also for our auditor. It was very difficult for them to find receipts. They couldn't follow where the money was. They had to basically go back and reverse engineer and try to figure that out, which also increased the cost of their audit. Our cash handling policies and procedures, when I started, one of the things that I noticed, and this is just their practice, this common sense, is that you don't typically, you don't count money at the front desk, at the end of the day. We were collecting, since at the wrong time, we were collecting thousands of dollars a month. And I had met with, at the time, Wigglesworth, a year ago, Wigglesworth, Matt Chance worked for them. And we talked about what the correct policy would be for cash handling, and he gave me a really good list of how it should be done. And that should have been in place, and that was never in place. And one of the things that they had required was, we needed a safe, and just nothing fancy, but just a safe. And that didn't happen. So, now, we have a safer place, we've got a safer room, account line. We've got our cameras working, this for a year, our cameras work. So, the cameras all working in town, all in the gear back there. So, before these things were put in place, we were in jeopardy of losing state grants because we have an audit that's overdue. And I've worked with the state now, the state legislative office, to let them know that our PKS audit is coming through, so they're going to have that. We're not in jeopardy right now of losing any grants, as long as they get that audit. Also, having the condition of our paperwork and documentation also, it causes us to get higher interest rates. So, as we're going out and we need a credit or something, what they want from a municipality is the most recent audit. We don't have that yet, luckily, we don't, we're not looking to buy anything, but that's very important. And our audit this year isn't going to be the best. It's not, it's not, the finances aren't going to be the best. But, we are in a position for next year. We've got our paperwork in order for next year, and I'm pretty positive that next year's audit is going to be a positive audit, and it's not going to be too problematic. There's always going to be a recommendation here and there, but there are not going to be uses. Based on where we are now, the policies that we have in place. I will send you all the draft policy that our CPA gave. I mean, I think it covers quite a bit, I think they'd be satisfied with it. Currently, we still have the checks and balances in place, although there's not a finance director. I still, as the town manager, I don't have access to the accounting systems where I can, for someone, manipulate and move money. I don't have access to that. But, I do approve any expenditures or any payments that go on, I just don't have access to that system. Intentionally, I don't have access to the safe. The only people that have access to that safe, Chief Lee and our front desk finance person, they have access to it. I don't, only in case of emergencies. So, there are checks and balances in place. All of the recommendations from, from PKS, our annual auditor, and Wigglesworth, Layton, Moore and Sands have been put in place. And we had, and they're following, following the best practices, that the, the most current finance best practices. So, right now, we're looking in pretty good shape. There's never, there's not been a question that there was any lungness. It was, the issues are around record maintenance and things like that. That was, that was the biggest issue, and it was an issue that we had to resolve right away. It wasn't something we could wait. We had to do an immediate force correction, because again, it affects our grants, it affects our ability to win, and basically, it affects our book. So, that's what we're doing.
Question. Are we playing on standard, or are we playing on hard enough that right for ourselves?
Right now, I don't plan on, I haven't yet financed the record. I think until I get a good handle on where we are financially, I think that it is cheaper for us right now to really use Wigglesworth, Layton, Moore and Sands. They are a lot less expensive than paying salary and benefits on the term of a full-time employee. They are certified public accountants, so there's a level of accountability there that we didn't have.
And what exactly is their role on a daily basis, a weekly basis, a monthly basis? How, how are the CPAs, what are they doing for oversight purposes of what's happening with the finance department?
So, basically, what the agreement with, with them is that they're not managing finance department. So, they are available if you have any questions with Sage, which is one of our accounting systems, Sage or Edmonds. They do have access to our accounts. They can't move money, but they can go in and look at our account balances and things like that. So, they are available if we have daily questions. They do come in monthly, or if we need them, they come in and they reconcile the books, make sure our deposits match up with the general ledger, which is very important because they weren't in the past. They also make sure that our receipts, that those records are being maintained as well.
So, that's a good oversight procedure for us to have in place, that things be on a regular basis, like that?
Yes.
And keep it straight? Any other questions?
Oh, and I could just add this, the balance in the account is one million, twenty-six thousand, thirty-four dollars and thirty-one cents. That's in the general fund, and we have approximately a million dollars in the ARP account. And we'll be getting monthly expenditure reports. And the expenditure reports, they're going to, they're going to be titled un-audited because we don't have our final audit yet. So, it's going to be un-audited until we get that final audit. And then, then the accounts will be titled audited.
When, when is that expected?
I, I'm hoping to get it by the end of the month, because I've told the state, because the state, I've been contacting the state, and I've told them, and I've told PKS, that we've got to get this done, it's time sensitive.
And is this for the twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two?
Twenty, twenty.
Twenty, twenty, twenty-four. How about twenty-one, twenty-two, because that's coming up?
That's coming up, and that's what they're gearing up for, and that's why I have Matt Chance here to make sure that when they come in, and I don't want to frame it with a swing, but the previous audit, we had about eight people here for five to seven days, who were buzzing with three million dollars. That's just too much, and that's why the cost was so much. So, right now, we're trying to get everything in order, so that when that, when PKS comes back, we don't have to suspend one thousand dollars, going to fund that audit. So, if PKS came in toward the end of October, that would be great, because we're still working on getting all of the documents together and getting them in order, so that when they get it, they understand it.
And that would be for the twenty-one, twenty-two?
Yes.
And that's pretty much in line with normal, October's normal agent hat, we're looking to seeing our audit.
Is it important we make public or is this?
They'll present that in a meeting. Any other questions, guys? Very good, thank you, always welcome for that. We've got boards and committee terms and appointments. So, this is something that has come, come up from time to time, over and over again, and I think it's time for us to look at all of our boards. Most of these boards have had members on there for a long time, which is fine, it's hard to find good people to be on boards, but as it's turned out, we're pretty much out of, everybody's got the same terms. Whenever you decide to leave or don't do it, we appoint somebody else. And I think it's, for continuity, we need to try to set these boards up to where we have the right number of people on them. We have a staggered rotation of terms, so that if everybody on the thing decided they were going to quit one day, we wouldn't have to start from new. We'd have, yeah, we'd have a way to, you know, have some continuity there with some experience on the board bringing in new people. So, we've got several boards here, we've got the information on who's on these boards, and some of them, let's see here, we've got, I think our biggest one that we probably need to work on the most would be our planning, is that right?
Right, I would, if I, if I can.
Yeah, absolutely.
I would say that, for the most part, most of the terms have expired.
Right.
And on, on all of these, and, and you will probably, you'll probably be looking at accepting the applications, almost every, every board, except the Board of Elections, I think the two vacancies there, and the Menucha River Park Commission.
Which is okay right now, right?
Well, that's the question that I had, Commissioner Johnson, are you?
No, I need to, um, go home.
Okay, so that would be one.
Do these terms, are they already staggered on that?
Yes.
The word said that we've got, we've got a way to, so we would maybe appoint someone to finish that first term, and then they could be reappointed, obviously, if they would like to stay or do a good job.
Yes.
They could stay on, but to keep that staggered, most of the point is trying to make sure that we're doing.
So, the, 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 the plan is going to be 2012, 2017, '17. What, what are we going to do by that? We just going to keep going over and over?
Well, if, last year, again, most of everyone expired, so last year, we had asked if some of the current members would like to stay, at least for another, for another year, and most of them said yes, and probably the others said yes. So, now, it's, we would, I mean, we could still reach out to them and say, you know, you want to continue, or we could make a decision to advertise all of those positions together. That would be a, a, a decision to decide.
You can reappoint, you can reappoint.
Before the term, usually the four-year term. So, three-year term. So, you can reappoint, or you can ask for a repeat. And this is a five-year, your choice.
Five-year, okay.
So, it's Commissioner's choice. We need to do that, get, get applications, the same way it is. We don't get, we don't really get enough people to be able to put something on board to, at least we, give a chance to new people, probably, that they, that they're still doing.
We could certainly ask current members to reapply, I guess, if that would be right, or put a letter of interest back in, as well as anyone else, and then we would have a pool of needs to go from. How, how would we, how would we go about setting up the boards in a way that we have a staggered terms? One of the boards that I, I was on years ago, we had the same issue, and what we did was, is we asked, or we had two members, over five members, we had two members that stayed on for two more years.
Three or four.
And then, right, and then, as new members came on, they would be on for five years.
Right.
And after those two years were up, those, those positions would be appointed at that point for five years. And then you've got a staggered thing. So, it would, it would take two years to really get the staggered part started, staggered term started, but, and I would, I would like to, maybe encourage us to look at at least two or maybe three, if we want to do three members, that have been on the board to stay for, for two years, if they, if we want to do it that way. But, we've got somebody on there that's been on the board and not completely turning it over with no experience or no, nobody, that's just a thought I had. I know Mr. Spicer, he's been sort of chairing that board for a couple of years, right? He's got a lot of knowledge. You know, comprehensive plan, we've really got to start looking at doing a new comprehensive plan, which the planning and zoning commission, that's a huge part of their, that, that takes a lot of hours, a lot of time of their heart to do that. So, we want to experience people, people that, you know, and they, they don't have to be the same ones that are on here, at least some new ones, but, you know.
Do you need to get on the phone or call or meet with them, that's what they're going off, or if they want it?
Yeah, how, how would we do it? Could, could we do?
Sound, reach out.
But, is it, is it a question of, because I'm not sure, I'm pretty, some of the commissioners, may not even know some of the folks on the board. So, you know, I mean, if that, I don't know if you would think about, you know, if some of the current members would like to continue, they can always come in, and I don't know how you feel about that. You know, come in and, and, I don't want to, sort of, like, an interview, or you could just, you know, talk to them and go from there. But, I don't know, that, so, once, once we determine who's going to, you know, who's going to stay and who we need to appoint, what does that process look like? I think there's something else that we should talk about tonight as well. What does that process look like? You know, do we simply accept a letter of interest and kind of read it and go through it, and it sounds good, or in court, would we want to say that and actually interview the person, get to really go? You know, for example, over planning and zoning commission, I mean, we definitely want to make sure that there's, there's some knowledge of planning and zoning, land use practices there. There are, in boards like the historic district commission, you know, one, one of the things that we definitely like to know is, do you have experience in historic area work, reconstruction, demolition and things like that?
That's actually a board, if we dissolve, is that right, or not?
It's still, it's still, we, we didn't dissolve that.
We dissolved.
No historic district.
I think we need to have somebody else question there, you know, that we can ask.
And maybe the chair of the board could be part of that discussion with us as well?
Yes.
What, what would it look like, or would it, would it be okay if we had a joint meeting with the planning and zoning commission as it is now?
Sure.
During a work session, is that good, or?
Typically, it's fine. Typically, you're looking for an expression of interest, or somebody may say, I'd like to be off, somebody else may say, I'd like to be on.
Correct.
And then, all of you get to decide how you want to do it.
Well, we may, we may have a couple of people on this current board that are looking for a way to get it out, you know, and this might be it. Or, or, or say, you know, look, things have changed in my life, and I really don't have time to do it, or whatever, so, and they may all want to stay on, but we still need to ask or figure out which ones of them are going to have a half term before we reappoint them to get the staggered term. So, we can have those discussions with them as well, to see if people are going to do that. I mean, hopefully, it doesn't come down to one of us has got the big act, which one has, who gets a half term. I'd like to give them an opportunity to see. And here again, after a half term, they could still be reappointed for a full term. So, just need to get those terms staggered, I think, so. There are several boards here, we could start, you know, the appeals board doesn't meet unless it's needed, so maybe they won't be needed too often, so we could do that a little later, the historic district, we don't have to worry about supervised elections, don't have to worry about, so like I, like I said, the planning and zoning is really, we do have a ethics board, correct?
Yes, right.
And that's another one that probably, probably needs to be revitalized as well. But, I would say, unless you guys have a different opinion, I would say the planning zoning commission is probably the one we should start with and try to get, get taken care of first.
Agreed. I agree, I, um, I consider that one, open, open to, you know. I would like to, I like the idea about the interview, to, you know, getting to talk to the ones, the current members that are on here as well, because a couple of them, I don't know. So, I would, I like the idea of, and then expressing the interest, having an interest application.
So, you want them typically to accept a letter of interest, and almost before you mentioned a questionnaire, there is a letter of interest?
Pretty much, pretty much. You could ask it, the letter for background, educational background, whatever, work background, so the letters of interest.
So, we'll come up with maybe, how should we word that, that criteria for your letter of interest? So, that should be something, maybe?
I mean, as you were mentioning, the, the letter of interest should obviously include your interest, why you want to do it, what your background is, and things like that, you know, your education, work experience, I mean.
Good, and it's also a good question for some of the members of the planning and zoning. What type of, what's made you a good member, or what type of things would help a, a new member, what would they need to do to kind of help them do a good job of this as well? So, maybe come up with a draft criteria for letter of interest that we could look at as well? Does that make sense?
Yeah.
That's right. Should, should we try to do that in October, bring them in in October meeting?
Yes.
See who can go? Work session. Work session, yes, yeah, work, I'm sorry, work session.
We'll, we'll put a reach out to them this week, and I'll have the draft criteria and, and answer.
I think once we get to that point, we kind of get that one figured out, we can go through the other boards and, and we'll have a frame, you know, frame work done for that. Any other discussion about that at this point? Sure, you guys okay with, we hear anything from our, from the council, coming in with us? If they have one, someone wants to speak on, you guys okay with that?
Hi, everybody, Dale Parker with Cropper. And regarding the boards and commissions, just, could you list them really quickly, the boards that are available, or all of them? So, I've got the planning and zoning, appeals, elections, ethics and park board. Is that all, is that all of them?
That is, that is correct, yes.
And so, my question is, do you have, like, are you guys thinking of, like, of, a formula of the composition of the board in terms of the background, not necessarily just in terms of their professional background, but, because our, my, our perspective is that we need to have community members, regular community members be a part of these boards so that they can begin to understand the processes that are involved in being on the planning and zoning, to be, what, what does it entail? So, I'm wondering if there's any, like, preconceived notion of, like, the background of the people that would be appointed to the board?
So, that'd be something for us to discuss, when we're talking about the criteria for having them come in and something like that. Thank you. Alright, so, we'll move now on, the Samuel Dale Street renaming, I think Dr. Hall is here with us today, we go, hear from him again, or we got some more information, or you, Clay?
Well, we can do some, some research, we'll look at the best, the best way to rename a street. And typically, what happens, some of the research that, that has been done, is that most municipalities don't formally rename the actual street, because you've got, you've got post office considerations there, you've also got nine, nine-one-one and emergency considerations, and don't think they have to go through there. But, what typically happens is, an, an area will be named after the person. So, you know, we were going through town, and we were trying to find a street that I think would, that's low travel and would really... think would, that's low travel, and would really, really be a good place to really show his importance to the community, and the street that we found was Prince William and Somerset, it's right there with the, with the courts office. You've got Samuel Chase monument there, you've got another monument there, and I believe, and I'm not sure when that's going to happen, but, you know, there's also going to be a plaque, I don't know if I'm whether, you know, that, the final mansion in the state of Maryland, which would be right across the street. And I think that that area there is a very important area, it gets a lot of traffic, and we could rename that street after Mr. Dome, and by doing that, I think that, for me, from what I could see, that would be the most public, public place.
What do you see?
What do you mean?
As far as rename?
Oh, so basically, we would go, we would buy new streets on, and we would have that dedication there, so we wouldn't rename Prince William Street, but it would also, we would press William Street, and then we assign above it.
And that's what I would say, I know this is all, it has a lot on top of the new name.
And I know that there was also a recommendation to name a residential street, a rename a residential street, and that's a little different. I think that if we're going to start considering renaming residential streets, we definitely have to have a policy or procedure in place that the residents of that street have a say in it as well. So I really haven't looked into renaming, I'm not sure if we have a different name for that, because we don't have a policy in place where the residents actually have a voice in that, and the residents may not, may not want that. There are nine streets there right now, I mean, nine houses there, so before we do anything there, we definitely have to get some input from the council.
So just to be clear, if we were to do something where you're talking about with the Samdome Way, that's not going to change anyone's mailing address, or nine one one address, or anything like that, that would have to, you know, incur a cost from residents and have that as an address, something like that, but it would definitely be a very visible place to honor Mr. Dome, is that right?
And you would build a resolution, commission would build a resolution.
That's the only spot to do, you know, also, oh, yeah, that was absolutely the most well-traveled, I thought that was probably, so that's real.
Could I ask Mr. Hall a quick question there? Is there a section in town that was very, where he was more prominent at, that would be like his talking ground, so to speak, or something that would be a great place to honor him there?
I think that's, this answer just outlined.
I'm sorry?
This answer just outlined was appropriate, Prince William, Samdome Way.
Okay.
But there was a street called Progressive?
Yeah, Progressive, we know Hampton Avenue has its own history, so people don't want to tamper with that, but it's a street off of Hampton Avenue that's kind of like directly across from the home and park drive from Progressive Lane, but it is residential, I think it has about ten, it has about ten houses there as well, as well, it's only had three buildings since I think it comes up under that address. So, and that was my suggestion when I was speaking to Dr. Hall, only because I knew that he had, he had residential properties out there, rental properties out on Hampton Avenue, as well as his store, plus on Hampton Avenue.
This is inside for you. I grew up in New York City, and there are many streets that have dual names in the city, among the lines of what you're talking about, this is, Sixth Avenue is Avenue of the Americas, Jackie Robinson Highway is the West Side Highway. The highway was officially changed, but the street never was because of the problems and difficulties. I mean, you change a street address, you've got to change every license, registration, insurance, it's a nightmare when you start going down immediately. So the idea of putting in a memorial street sign is an excellent one, and you're not disturbing even the businesses that have to do all that changing, and does give honor to the person or the event that you want to give honor to.
Point of clarification, that's Progress Lane out Hampton Avenue, we're talking about, not Progressive, and we're basically talking about dedicating the street, not necessarily renaming the street.
I shouldn't speak up about this, but I did know Samdome also, he was instrumental in the health department, Nelson was scope, where Bailey Jewelers was, and been demolished, but will be a new entrance to that parking lot, where at the end it was the jewelry shop. It will be an unnamed entry. It will be leading to what is now TLC, which is a future entity of scope. You could call that Samdome Way.
Right.
Lead right into where he used to, to build talking ground, as an unnamed location.
We've got several good suggestions here, guys, to, we need to continue to think about it a little bit more, or talk back, come back with some more ideas, or we want to go ahead and move forward, but I think, I think there's certainly a consensus here at the table that let's get this done, right? And it's a matter of where, what would make sense. I like, I like that with what Richard just spoke of, that makes a lot of, you know, seems to make a lot of sense, so. Will you take a break, Mr. Hall?
Let me say, I certainly appreciate this, the suggestion, the building, which is located on the property, according to scope minutes, historical minutes, his name was spoken on the building, his picture inside the building, and I like, I mean, I like all suggestions, but as long as it's visible to the public, and we have a lot of traffic going through our street, I have no problem, I mean, I think we're going to end up together.
Is that building named after him, and got his picture inside, or anything like that?
No, sir. I think change of venue, whether it be from scope to TLC, Manchester, different board directors, minutes, the laws, and that makes it so, we have a problem proving it. And Mr. Donald Root, who was president of scope boards here live, and whether he had risen, I don't know, but that's the situation with us.
But do you think the interest there, the interest going in, they're contained?
If we can't get other information, I don't see, I don't think we better, where to go.
That was certainly odd around where it started, right?
That's it.
Let's, yeah, I mean, are we, are we for sure, or you're ahead?
Chief, when you know, just talking, if there's questions, is this new way on private property is a town street? If it's, if it's not a town street, then I think we have, there may be.
That's something we have to find out.
So we need to do a little research on that.
I definitely would find that out. It's public property. Be careful to say what's all.
So we need to find it, right? Because it's private property, they got to.
How about, how about we do this, I'm wanting to say many times, let's not kick the can down the road, and I'm not trying to do that, but I think if you give us time to do a little research on that, I think.
And do it right.
And do it right. We could come back and make a decision in October, which way we're going to go, be able to go with that, and get this thing on the way. Are you good with that? Forward, thank you for your patience. All right, so, merit award, guys on here to talk about. We haven't done one in several months, and had anyone nominate someone, or whatever, but I know we have a lot of people here in town that deserving of an award, and we need to think about continuing that, I think it's a good thing. Any thoughts on it, or how we should work this? I'm going to throw this out there, would it be a good idea to maybe make this a quarterly award, as opposed to a monthly award? It seems like every month, it's a quick turnaround every month to try to come up with a new person to get a buy, get the thing made, stuff like that. Makes, I think, makes it a little more prestigious to do, you know.
One of four.
One of four, you know, but I do think it's a very well, you know, a good thing to have, you know, if we want to make it.
Thank you, Mr. Hall.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I got to leave, my daughter bought me some crab, for being a good dad.
We'll be right back. So, how do we want to start it?
We get ten, do, we get ten next one?
If we do it in October, that could be the fourth quarter, or the?
Maybe the fourth quarter, yeah.
And then, oh, when in January, did that, because it's right on the fourth quarter, right?
I don't know if you want to continue the past practice, I mean, typically it was one person to nominate someone, and then it's like more or less on the spot, that discussion, would you like to have more time to discuss, consider? I mean, I don't know, I mean, as it being quarterly, you'll probably get additional recommendations, you'll have an opportunity to, you know, look at the, make that type of choice. I don't know if there's a process you'd like in place for that, or if you're okay with doing that, if you had it before.
I don't know, we make nominations in October, but in November, we can discuss, in December, we can go in, and go through, and we can, where you make a decision in November, and then December, we can, that's where it's into.
Present it?
Yeah.
So present it at the end of the quarter, then?
Okay, yeah.
That makes sense, I mean, if we wait until the, like now, if we did it, if we would have to come up with it tonight, that still only gives you two weeks to pull it all together. I like that idea.
Take the nominations in, you know, October, then November, we can discuss.
And is it, would it be okay if the nominations were circulated through an email for all of us to think about for that, and then when we bring, when we come together for our October work session?
Then give us like a work session, sitting upon your, you know, your, or, or.
Start that process.
And then by the work session in December, we can be able to, you know, that's where it is, or we can do it in December.
November, and present it in December, right?
Yeah, town meeting in December, you know. You said that a quarter, you know, four, I think it's it.
So just the consensus on that, to do that, that's all we need in the poll?
Yes.
Consensus everyone to the floor. Great work out of the town. So now, basically, agenda discussion, we've already filled out the work session, we're next, what are we going to say?
The legislative agenda, hopefully they can stay here, we did receive several grants, that go on the legislative to, like, to amend the budget, so we've got something right from the police department, we've got a critical area grant as well, that we would have to amend the budget, so we should, except for amend the budget.
For our October meeting?
Yes.
And what else will we have for that meeting? We have, or we have, Department of Commerce?
Right now, we don't have any.
Take care of those things, and if something pops in your head overnight, wakes you up in the middle of the night, that's somebody that, first thing you want to do.
We already had it, the river park and Main Street.
So the Menloken River Park and Main Street, you know, works actually for October, and also U M S as well, U M S wasn't available, Carrie wasn't available for Main Street, so, and she's the chair of the Menloken River Park as well, so she wasn't.
And I want to add something about U M S relation to the October work session, I have some questions on that. If there's nothing else, ladies and gentlemen, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn. We'll be going into closed session for real estate.
I think most of the, second.
Motion second, agreed.
I think most of the, closed session.
And motion to go into closed session. Okay. All agreed, aye, aye.